Good evening. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Chief Rich Austin to lead us in an invocation.
Let us pray. Dear wise and loving Father, we pray your blessings upon this meeting and all those gathered here today. We thank you for the opportunity to care for this beautiful community we call Milton. Father, we pray for our elected officials, our city staff, and the community members that we serve. We pray that during this time together, you give us all a sense of wisdom, a sense of fairness, and a sense of justice as we all work together to be good stewards of this great community in which you have entrusted us. It is in your most blessed name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call the regular media in the Milton City Council for August 17, 2020, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully. And if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment card to the clerk, the city clerk, as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow speakers to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards will be accepted. Our comment cards are back on the table.
Right now.
On this table here. And to Tammy, our city clerk, if you'd bring those.
Thank you.
So if the city clerk will please call the roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'll be happy to call roll for the August 17, 2020, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, bursts, or dialogues with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Kirkley.
Here.
And for the record, Joe Longoria is absent, and Rick Morgue is joining us. Calling in via Zoom.
Yes, it's Rick. Is Rick called in yet?
Yes.
Is he on the?
He is in, yes. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. Appreciate you being here. If our clerk will please sound the next item.
Approval of the... My apologies, Mayor. Approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 20221.
Okay, I want to add an executive session to discuss potential litigation before new business. And do we need to also add another item on executive session?
For personnel, yes.
Personnel, yeah. So, want to add an executive session to discuss potential litigation before new business as well as discussion on personnel. Is there any other changes to the agenda anybody has? I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the meeting agenda with the adjustments that you have just added.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion for approval as read and adjusted from Councilmember Moore with a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, Councilmember Morgue, can he hear? I didn't. Well, at this point, I've heard those that are here.
Continue to work on what the technical issues.
Minutes.
Six.
Okay, do we have any general public comment, Tammy?
I do not, sir.
Okay. We'll... We can move on to the consent agenda. Tammy, if you would please sound those out.
Sure. The first item is approval of the July 6, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 20222. Next is the approval of an agreement for outside providers and facility use agreement between the City of Milton and Rush Union, Inc., to provide adult soccer programming. Agenda Item Number 20223. Our third item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Atlanta Retirement Partners to serve as investment advisors for the city's 401 and 457 plans. Agenda Item Number 20224. Our next item is approval of a change order number one agreement between the City of Milton and Atzoro Technologies to provide enhanced additional features in connection with the ongoing design and development of the smartphone application for the city's Smart Communities Grant Project, Walking School Bus. Agenda Item Number 20225. Our fifth item is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Wilburn Engineering, LLC, for the construction of an emergency vehicle hybrid beacon for the new public safety facility located on SR, Route 9. Agenda Item Number 20226. Next is the approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Southern Actuarial Services to perform actuarial services for the city's defined benefit pension plan. Agenda Item Number 20227. Our seventh and final consent agenda item is approval of a subdivision plat and revisions. The first development is located at 13645 Freemanville Road, Land Lot 915 and 916. It's a minor plat subdivided from 13645 Freemanville Road to two lots. The total acres is 18.364, and the density is 0.109 lots per acre. Our second development is Hansard, Hewitt, and Carter. 14875, 14905, 14915 Thompson Road, Land Lot 603. It's a minor plat to reconfigure property lines for three lots. The total acres is 3.78, and the density is 0.79 lots per acre. Agenda Item Number 20228.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda as read?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by the city clerk.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Kirkley for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And again, we still... Do we know if Rick was able to vote on that? Okay.
Said aye. Or at least he spoke whenever everybody else is saying aye.
Okay.
We're going to get him to call in.
All right. We'll move on to reports and presentations. If the city clerk will please sound that next item.
Our first item is presentation of e-scooters regulations. Mr. Parag Agarwal.
Tammy, this report, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Shuba Jangam, Senior Planner at City of Milton. On behalf of Community Development Department, I have been looking into impact of rental e-scooters on other communities. So today, we are revisiting the rental e-scooter business regulations in Milton. We are here, first of all, to follow up on the last presentation that happened in August 2019. I think Police Department did that presentation about the rental e-scooters. And we would like to present also today some key findings about rental e-scooters in other cities and talk about the regulations for Milton moving forward. So what we want to achieve today, we would like to finalize regulatory option for the city for this particular business model, either allow the e-scooters, ban them, or allowing just certain areas. So I just want to remind everybody, just we are only talking about the rental e-scooter business where it's a rental and not personal e-scooters. We are allowing personal scooters. So what is a rental e-scooter business? It's when, you know, the electric vehicle is being rented by a single rider, and it's mostly a slow speed vehicle, and it can be legally considered as moped. And the user usually just uses their credit card to rent these things, and they pick it up from the rental racks, and they... It works very well in like a business district or entertainment district. And, you know, they leave it once they have traveled a short distance wherever they want to go. And the rental company then picks them up and puts them back at their original locations. So that's how that business operates. Quick reminder on the timeline, what happened in the past. We had a first presentation on August 17 about e-scooters. Then, I think, at the end of September, the Community Development Department got a request for such kind of business, and that's why we started looking into it. And November 18, City Council put six months of moratorium on starting such a business because we wanted to really look into how, you know, how can we really deal with these things. I know lots of things happened between then. This moratorium has expired. But today, we want to kind of talk about what do we do about this issue. So first of all, just to be clear, you know, from very various points of views, for example, legal point of view, just want to remind that city has a right to ban or regulate the e-scooters. Policy-wise, a city does not currently have any particular policy regarding the rental mobility devices, and the public view or the support or non-support is not yet very clear. Now, these are my findings. These are our neighboring cities, and some of them have outright banned e-scooters. For example, Alpharetta, Marietta, Norcross, Smyrna, Woodstock, they have banned completely. Some of them have no ordinance or no stances. They don't have any ordinance on the book, which doesn't mean they don't allow it. They just don't have anything. For example, Roswell does allow it. I mean, obviously, pre-pandemic situation. They did allow e-scooters without any ordinance. And some of them, like Atlanta, Brookhaven, East Point, they have active ordinance to regulate the e-scooters, and Decatur is in the process of getting there. So these are just examples of what other cities have been doing. And we do want to know that, I do want to tell you that it looks like Crab Apple and Deerfield are potential market for this kind of businesses. But at Crab Apple, we have lots of new construction, and at Deerfield, obviously, we share our boundaries with Alpharetta, which has banned e-scooters. So it... Those things can get, can complicate things if we start regulating and allowing those things. So just wanted to have it out there. But the fact remains that, you know, mobility devices are really good for the last mile travel. And we do, if we... I mean, we should have an open mind about it, and we should look into it. Maybe not right away because we're not ready for it, but in the near future, we should look into it because they are providing a good service. So finally, I just wanted to show that we have options. These are our options for regulating or banning, and whichever way you want to go, Community Development Department is here to support it, and we will move forward. So any questions?
Any questions or comments? I want to clarify this, and this is for rental or business with the e-scooter. So if somebody lives in Crab Apple and owns an electric...
They're allowed.
They're allowed to use their own personal one.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Paul?
Just, I guess, a comment to start the conversation. I think in more urban environment, they've been used in a pretty successful way. I know that the contrast to the success for the user is the community that has taken issue with, they become urban trash if they're left in disrepair, or they're left in a not a designated place, and they become more of an eyesore than they are something that's providing utility. I don't think we're anywhere near an urban center at this point in Milton's stage of development. I think it might be something that would be worthy of some consideration further down the road in our two more commercial areas, Crab Apple and Deerfield. But at this point, I don't think we're in either of those locations at the stage of development where I could see a real good application of the current business model.
Okay. I, you know, and I know we're not voting on anything, but if, you know, direction from me personally, want to hear from everybody, though, would either extend the moratorium or possibly ban for a limited time because to Paul's point, at some point, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, maybe a different scenario, but it probably isn't a good fit, in my opinion, right now, for Deerfield or Crab Apple. But certainly want to hear from everybody else, too, what your thoughts or direction are. Laura?
So what are the options? How many times can we extend a moratorium? Or how long can we ban something to be able to revisit it?
I can answer that, Councilmember Bentley. The answer is, is so long as it speaks to the public health, safety, and welfare of Milton, it is legitimate, it is objectively reasoned, and based on legitimate public policy considerations. You can impose a ban for as long as those reasons exist. This implicates a lot of those issues. It implicates Milton sidewalks, Milton right-of-way, it implicates public safety, it implicates aesthetics. I could go on.
Thank you. Because I asked that because I agree as well. I don't see a need right now for the scooters, and I think that's a big problem, especially in the Deerfield area. You pointed out that Alpharetta has banned them. And we share so many of the same roads, and I mean, it's going to be very complicated if we ever do want to consider that. So I'd be in favor of banning or extending a ban or a moratorium.
Anybody else? Rick, do you have any comments, Rick?
Not at this time, yes.
Okay, I don't do... Did you guys hear that? I didn't.
He has no comment.
Okay.
I'll add a comment.
Okay.
I think we should go in the other direction and have bridle trails and hitching posts. And let me make use of my mags, and I'll rent them out. That would be my contribution. So no e-scooters.
Okay. And I believe we may have a public comment. Do we have a public?
No, we do not.
We do online.
Oh, we do. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Stacy, I'll let you...
All right. Mr. Jessup, if you'll unmute yourself and go ahead and state your name and address before you make your comment. Hold on, Mr. Jessup. We're having some technical issues. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Jason Jessup at 13455 Bethany Road in Milton. And I just wanted to offer my comment on the scooter issue. I would not support the rental e-scooter business in Milton. We've been downtown Atlanta where they've got the scooters all over the place. We were down there for Music Midtown in the last year, and the scooters are just strewn everywhere. They're all over the sidewalks, they're in people's front yards, they're half into the road, and people were tripping on them and falling down. It was just a complete disaster, and there seemed to be no sense of responsibility or ownership for keeping them cleaned up. And they really were, they're just urban litter. They're just all over the place and really were, I think, a hazard to the pedestrians and the public. I would not support bringing that to Milton.
Thank you.
If you couldn't hear that, he's not in support of it.
Well, that's what I wanted to say. It was a little hard to hear, but I did pick up that he discussed the urban litter and the problems with it in different areas that they'd been to. So in case everybody didn't hear, but that was the definite just... Okay, is there any more public comment? I'm assuming there is not. Okay. Again, I think you guys have direction, and we will... Thank you very much. We'll move on to the first presentation.
The first presentation is consideration of RZ 20-10 to amend Section 64-1, definitions as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sale facilities. Agenda Item Number 20229. The next item is consideration of RZ 20-11 to amend Section 64-775, use regulations, C1, community business, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sale facilities. Agenda Item Number 20230. Consideration of RZ 20-12 to amend Section 64-1608 and create Section 64-1608.1, the temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities administrative use permit. Agenda Item Number 20231. Our fourth item is the consideration of RZ 20-13 to amend Article... I have to help with that. Which one is that one? Crab Apple Form Base Code, Definitions, Article 6.1, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Agenda Item Number 20232. Consideration of RZ 20-14 to amend the Crab Apple Form Base Code, Article 5, Table 9, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer firework retail sales facility. Agenda Item Number 20233. Consideration of RZ 20-15 to amend Deerfield Form Base Code, Definitions, Article 6.1, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer firework retail sale facilities. Agenda Item Number 20234. Our seventh and final item is consideration of RZ 20-16 to amend Article for the Deerfield Form Base Code, Article 5, Table 10, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Agenda Item Number 20235.
Okay. Do I have a motion? First presentation item?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first presentation items as read.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous. Excuse me. Okay, we don't have any items under our public hearing or zoning agenda, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Tammy, if you would please sound that item.
That item is the consideration of a resolution to accept the Milton Community Trail Prioritization Plan. Agenda Item Number 20236, Mr. Parag Agarwal.
This was the hardest part. Mayor and the city council members, I am Parag Agarwal, City's Community Development Director, and today we are in front of the city council to make the final draft presentation on the Milton's Trail Master Plan called the Milton Community Trail Prioritization Plan. If the city council agrees with the goals and objectives of this Trail Master Plan, the city council will be... the City Council will be voting today on a resolution to adopt the Milton's Trail Master Plan. We gave a presentation to the City Council on July 6th council meeting. We got some very good input from the City Council members. So the goal of today's presentation is not to go over the entire plan again. I will be giving a very brief introduction. We have made a couple of changes since last time, based on the feedback which we received from the council members. I will be going through those changes. And then we will be happy to answer any questions from the City Council. This has been a 16-months process. That included a number of community engagement meetings, field visits, City Council briefings, data analysis, online surveys, and cost estimating. And today we have the entire project team here with us if and case you answer any questions. Michelle McIntosh Ross, Principal Planner in our department, and the Project Manager of this project, Shuba Jankam Humvi, whom you just heard. She is a Senior Planner in our department. Christina Testori, the Project Manager from the Kimley Horn team, and the Project Planner Cindy, also from Kimley Horn. On July 6th, we also invited the Trail Advisory Committee members to attend the City Council meeting. And you heard from the Advisory Committee Chair, Dr. Brian Maloney, who spoke very passionately supporting this master plan. As we all know, the Milton community love its trail network. And the city has done a number of trail planning efforts in the past. But the focus of the 2020 Trail Master Plan is on three things. Number one is the community participation. Number second is the community prioritization. And number third is the project implementation. That is the reason why the project team is calling this Trail Master Plan as the Milton's Community Trail Prioritization Plan. Because it's basically driven by the community for the trail network. This plan basically divides, it's not only a visioning exercise, but it also divides the vision into various trail planning projects. It also has investment levels. And it also basically puts together the project schedule of these trail segments based on those funding levels. What we heard from the Trail Advisory Committee members that the city has been planning for the trail network for almost 10 years now. The time is here now for project implementation so that we can get these trails built. So again, just to go over the summary of this plan. This is a new master plan is recommending around 1.8 miles of off-street trails, 5.3 miles of new side paths, 6.6 miles of sidewalks, and 11 new crossing treatments to encourage pedestrian network in the city of Milton. The focus of this plan is also on putting new trails on the green space properties, which we are calling them preserves now. And this master plan is recommending around 4.2 miles of decomposed granite trails, 9.5 miles of native soil trails, and 97 parking spaces on these preserves. The master plan has four priorities. And I'm very proud to say, in the very first Trail Advisory Committee, the committee members were able to come up with these four priorities of the master plan. Number one, we want to build new trails in our downtown area, in our Crab Apple area. As you can see, there's so much of construction going on right now. It's always easy to build new trails when there's already private construction going on. So the focus of building new trails should be in our downtown. Number second, again, is in the Deerfield area. It is our commercial corridor. State DOT is working on widening the Route 9. So again, how can we basically build new trails along our Deerfield corridor? Number third, that the city should focus its resources on addressing safety concerns, walking, biking, and the safety concerns of horse riding. And number four, the priority is to focus trails on the green space properties. And you know the city has a separate master plan for Providence Park and also for the former Milton Country Club. Again, I won't go through all this. This number should have been updated. This is our fifth City Council presentation. We made a presentation, the fourth presentation was in July of this year. We had a number of target group meetings. We engaged the community members. Around 1,500 Milton residents have participated in this planning process. And that's the reason why everyone is in support of this project, because we have done a lot of community outreach in the beginning of this project. Again, community input survey, the city had a very robust community online survey last year from September 11 to September 25. We heard from more than 1,000 residents. We also had four target group meetings that was attended by more than 80 participants. We also held a number of public open houses and the City Council meetings. Again, we held four public open houses. And these are some of the pictures that basically shows that was pre-pandemic era. And so you can basically see people getting engaged into the planning process. Again, Trail Advisory Committee members, big committee. So we were having some issues with the CPAC, but this committee was even bigger than the CPAC. So it was a 25-member committee, was chaired by Dr. Brian Maloney. Very good discussion, very robust discussion. Again, some of the Trail Committee meetings at different stages of the planning process. The goal was engaging, trying to engage the community at each and every step of the planning process and to get their input. So this plan was unique because we tried to engage not only the City Council or the Trail Advisory Committee, but we also went in front of the Green Space Advisory Committee. We went in front of the Equestrian Committee. We went in front of the Public Arts Committee to see how we can incorporate public art into the trail planning exercise. Like if you look at the Atlanta Bedline, Atlanta Bedline has a number of public art pieces along the trail network. So that was the goal. So these are the couple of changes which we have made based on some of the input which we received from the City Council last time. Thank you to Councilmember Bentley. Some of, we have added few lines that basically says on the trail funding. So number one is we need to have a much more robust public-private partnership. And Councilmember Bentley helped us to connect with the land trusts. We had a very good meeting with the Southern Conservation Land Trust. And maybe we can engage them more into our various trail construction projects on the green space properties. So this is the only edit which we made since our last presentation. So again, I do have my, all my slides, but again, I just want to make it short and will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Parag on this? Laura?
Thank you very much, that was helpful. We had talked about reconvening the Trail Plan Committee as well as part of the approval of this plan. So I certainly am in favor of that. And Mike, you know, I don't know if that needs to be part of this approval or not. Just maybe we can talk about it.
Yeah, no, I would agree. I think it's a good idea to keep them involved.
I would suggest, because it's the trail plan that we, you know, some of our advisory councils are at large and some are by district. And I would suggest that this one be by district because the trail plans hit all of the areas of Milton, just as a suggestion.
Yeah, I was on going what Laura said. Because I remember us talking about that, but I don't think we want a 25-person committee, just like a seven-person like we always have. Okay, yeah, I'm in favor of that, too.
Anybody else or everybody good with something like that?
Yeah, just like clarification on one thing, please, Parag. Last time when we talked about money, I know that we talked about making sure that the former country club had what it needed for a build-out so that we can get that open and not spreading everything too thin. Could you visit that briefly for us, just so that we know the major priorities and that we're very focused on that one property?
Definitely. So as we know, the opening of the Milton Country Club property is one of the top focus, top priority of the city administration and also of the City Council. So we are all working towards the opening of this Milton Country Club property. But again, I will say that sometimes the pool of funding is also different. So again, some of the T's plus dollars and some of the sidewalks money can be used for the implementation of this Trail Master Plan. But the T's plus dollars cannot be spent for Milton Country Club. And we already have, for the Phase 1 and Phase 1B, we already have the funding in our budget for opening of the Milton Country Club. But yes, you are right, Councilmember Cookerly. The opening of the former Milton Country Club property is our top priority.
Yeah, I remember that now, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I believe we do have a public comment, so we'll let Stacy handle that. Can you do the music, too?
Mr. Braun, if you would go ahead and unmute yourself if you'd like to speak and make a comment. Looks like he lowered his hand. Okay, Mr. Jessup, if you will. Hold on. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your comment. Technical difficulty again, hold on to Mr. Jessup. Okay, try again. Yes.
Yes, good evening, this is Jason Jessup at 13455 Bethany Road. I have two questions. We live right in the middle of the Preserve at Sandy Cooper on Bethany Road. We're surrounded by that green space. And both my neighbor, the Bakers, and myself, my wife, would like to understand what the plan is for buffers around the residential areas that are joined to the green space to ensure that, you know, the trails and things are not coming too close to private property for privacy concerns.
Were you able to hear that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jessup.
And did we have another public comment, Stacy? Okay, that was it. So, and that, if someone could reach out to Mr. Jessup to answer his question after, sometime after me, okay. Anything else? Missed anybody? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20-236.
Second?
Okay, got a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
I just want to thank entire project team for working on this project. City Manager Steve Kurov, the entire, all the members of the Trail Advisory Committee, Dr. Brian Maloney, former Trail Advisory Committee Member Paul Moore. And a big thank you to Michelle, Christina, Cindy, and Shuba for working on it. Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is added to the agenda of the executive session to discuss potential litigation and personnel. So I will open up for a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved. Second?
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Jamison with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe we are back. I know that we had recessed for executive session. We do need to reconvene for just a parliamentary issue.
Okay, do I have a motion to reconvene?
I move we reconvene?
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Moore, second from Councilmember Bentley to reconvene. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, I think with respect to how we left going to executive session, we may have left the matter off. I do need a motion for reconsideration with respect to the vote to enter into executive session.
Okay, so we need to, do we need another motion?
We do.
But we need a motion to move into executive session.
We need a motion to reconsider that vote first.
Okay, so do I have a motion to reconsider that pass, that prior vote?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to reconsider the prior vote.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Jamison because he messed that one up. So that's good. With a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is Rick on?
He is, he's on the phone right here.
I didn't hear, but, you know, his vote, but.
Your own personal?
Okay. All right, so that was unanimous, correct? I think we, do we have a vote? Yeah. To rescind that last motion, the last motion to go into executive session. So do I need to repeat the vote, Ken?
Long as Councilmember Moore is recorded for the clerk as being in agreement, which I believe he was.
Okay, all right, so you're okay with that, Rick? Okay, all right, that's unanimous. So now, do I need to make a motion to enter into executive session?
For all three items, land acquisition, litigation, including potential litigation.
Okay, I didn't say, yeah, we didn't say land acquisition, so, but. I didn't know. All right, so. I am asking for a motion to enter into executive session for land acquisition. for land acquisition, potential litigation, and personnel. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we have entered into an executive session for land acquisition, personnel, and potential litigation.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Cookerly with a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. All right, thank you.
All of my tests.
Thank you.
I'm Hachkes and start.
Hello, David.
Does she want something to eat?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Need to check in.
Tammy, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you, Rick. Loud and clear.
Okay, thanks.
We've got two quick staff reports tonight as well. I fear saying that in front of Carol.
I have a motion to reconvene.
Second?
Motion second to reconvene. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that is everybody with the exception of Councilmember Kirk Curley, who's in the restroom. So if we'll move on to our new business. If our city clerk could please say on the new business item.
The next item is consideration of agreement for joint representation and cost sharing between the City of Milton and the cities of Roswell, Alpharetta, Sandy Springs, Johns Creek, East Point, College Park, Hatfield, City of South Fulton, Palmetto, Union City, Chattahoochee Hills, Fairbun, and Mountain Park to jointly engage and to share certain legal fees and costs associated with the representation of CARES Act funding. Agenda item number 2237. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much this evening. You have in front of you a proposed joint representation and cost sharing agreement. If the city council were to approve this, it would anticipate that the following jurisdictions, Roswell, Alpharetta, Sandy Springs, Johns Creek, East Point, College Park, Hatfield, City of South Fulton, Palmetto, Union City, Chattahoochee Hills, Fairbun, and Mountain Park, and of course Milton, all of the municipalities within Fulton County, would share a common potential, potential defense strategy, possibly a common attorney, and of course would share legal theories, et cetera, and all the various other permutations of how you bring a common claim related to COVID-19 or CARES Act funding. The potential claim, if it is in fact advanced, might be against Fulton County. And I'm using all of these non-absolute terms because it is not absolutely the case that litigation will be required with respect to CARES Act funding, but it is reasonably and in good faith contemplated that that may be required. I have reviewed this agreement. I'm comfortable with it. It anticipates that to the extent that our legal fees incurred, they would be split among the various cities identified based upon our percentage of local option sales tax receipts, and so I can be comfortable with that as well. This is a basically a precautionary measure such that we can share theories, share potential arguments and claims, et cetera, and not, of course, waive the attorney-client privilege. And if we do in fact have to finally retain a collective or common attorney, we can do that as well. My recommendation, members of the council, would be to approve this agreement with the additional caveat that no lawsuit can be brought on behalf of the City of Milton in this matter unless additional authorization is in fact provided by the city council by a firm revote.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ken on this? Okay. I do want to say this, based on whether the council approves this or not. I have both Commissioner Ellis and Hausmann have reached out to me and had a good conversation. And I, along with them, are very hopeful that, you know, there won't be litigation and that, you know, the county can work together with the cities to have a reasonable solution. So but anyways, I just want to throw that out that, as Ken said, this doesn't mean we're definitely going into litigation or that that will serve or fix everything. But we we hope to work together to get a mutual benefit, so.
That's correct. Hope for the best, prepare for the worst.
So if there's no other questions, I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 20-237 with the caveat that no additional lawsuit could be brought on behalf of the City of Milton without additional authorization.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion as read from Councilmember Bentley for approval and a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Anything that the council has they'd like to report on? All right, we'll move on to staff.
So Sam, this will take around half an hour, so sorry for that. You have to sign in.
He's giving you... Oh, do we...
Okay, sure, I'm ready. Mayor and the city council members just presenting some highlights from the department. They know who I am. Okay. Some numbers. Last month was a very busy month for the department. We reviewed around 102 permit applications from July 16th to August 13th. This was a significant increase from last month since I have started doing this. We review around 60 to 70 applications a month. Last month it was around 102. So suppose they are 20 business days, so it's around five to six new permit applications in a day. The number of... You have to go back. Yeah, okay. The number of tree removal permits also significantly went up. We generally have around 40 building permit, tree removal permits in a month. Last month, we reviewed around 56 tree removal permits. Moving forward. We had a good CPAC meeting on August 12th. Thank you, Councilmember Moore, and thank you, Councilmember Bentley, for being there. It was good discussion. We had a very good attendance at the CPAC. There were some technical issues. The people who were watching it on Zoom, they were able to hear it in a much proper way, but there were some audio issues inside the room because it was a hybrid meeting. But we are trying to work through those issues so that we do not have those issues in the next CPAC meeting. But thank you, it was a good discussion. And we do have our meeting notes, meeting action items, and we will be sending those action minutes to the city council members and to other staff members in the city council. For the Equestrian and the Equestrian zoning update project, we are planning to present this in the August Planning Commission meeting. We have a special event planned, we have a special webinar planned for the walking school bus on August 24th. It was supposed to be an in-person event, which we had to make it virtual on August 24th between 12:00 to 2:00. We will send the meeting invites to everyone so you don't have to attend the entire webinar. We already have around 18, 20 RSVPs, but whatever you can come in, it will be very appreciated. Tree conservation ordinance, city council approved the tree conservation ordinance a couple of weeks back. The goal of adopting the tree conservation ordinance in August was so that we can plan some workshops in the next couple of months. We are planning to have the first workshop in the second week of September. The date has not been finalized yet, but it will be catering to the Milton residents. And the second workshop, which we will be holding in October, will be catering to the business owners. Moving on. The BCA, the BCA meeting is on August 18th. There were two items on the agenda. Both the items have, the applicants have requested that both the items should be deferred. So we are canceling the meeting, we are canceling the BCA meeting for tomorrow. So the BCA made an update of their bylaws so that the ComTap director has the authority to cancel the meetings. If the applicants are requesting the applications should be deferred, I can cancel those meetings. So the first meeting will be canceled because of that bylaw change tomorrow. The Planning Commission meeting will be held on August 26th, light agenda. So that's the reason why we are having the Equestrian zoning project update on that Planning Commission meeting. Design Review Board meetings on September 1st. I think that's pretty much it from my side, yeah. Any questions?
Any questions or... Okay, thanks, Rod. Sam, you're doing it all tonight.
Yep, I was the last one, so I volunteered. Um, oh. Sorry. There was watching. Good evening. I just wanted to update you on what's been going on in HR since the last time we spoke. Probably the biggest change is the addition of a new staff member in Human Resources. Alexandra Gephardt, who's sitting in the back, far, far away, is our new Human Resources manager. Alexandra has about nine years of HR experience that she came to the city with. And her role here is primarily focused on payroll and benefits, but she's jumped into several other functions as well. She's been instrumental in helping us clean up our administrative systems. And having her in the department has actually allowed us to be more proactive on some of our efforts, especially in recruitment with allowing us to prescreen employees and conducting recruitment so a whole lot better and more effectively. Just for, on a side note, Alexandra's also a Milton resident, was very close to City Hall, actually. Human Resources has also played a role in our COVID response as well. We worked with emergency management, communications to get out guidance to our employees. At the beginning of the panic, to most recently, our mask policy for city employees as well. We conducted an employee engagement survey to check in with the employees, how they were doing in the middle of the pandemic. And right now, we're working on a policy that'll help us finalize our return to work policies that are in compliance with CDC regulations. We've been active in hiring during the pandemic. We've hired 11 new employees. Six of those are in police, two in fire, and three in admin. We're closing in on one more placement in our admin position vacancies with the hiring of a records clerk for the city clerk's office. And we're also working on recruitment for the facilities manager right now, also on the admin side. We're excited about the agenda, an agenda item you guys passed last week with Leader Gov. We're going to begin working with them. They're going to do a DISC profile for all of our leadership team and help us work, that'll let us work better together by knowing what else is going on with each, with each of our profile. I apologize about that. And lastly, we're going through Voya implementation that's been an ongoing project for us, but hopefully we're closing in on the actual end of this transition. Last week, we began a blackout window where we couldn't do anything with ICMA. This week, on the 20th and 21st, our funds will transfer over to Voya. And then there'll be an additional blackout period where employees won't be able to access, make transactions while Voya verifies all of our account information, make sure that it came over clean from ICMA. Thank you very much.
Okay, any questions for Sam? Thank you. All right, anything else for staff? And I'm sorry that you had to wait till the end of the meeting for the introduction, but welcome. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Unanimous, thank you. Thanks, Rick, for participating.
Okay, thank you. See you, guys.
Thank you, Carol.
Ace, you don't mind? You don't mind arriving with you? Home? I just have to get my purse.